Call or order the meeting of October 21st, 2024. Going into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 21, the Board will discuss the co-interim town administrator to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel under Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a2. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mickelson. Is there a second?
Mrs. Brooks.
Seconded by Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, roll call vote. Mr. Tattleton?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
And the Chair votes in favor.
Call and order the meeting to reconvene the meeting of the Select Board of August, October 21st, please rise. Salute the flag, please remain standing thereafter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence for our service personnel, both here and abroad, in both past and present. Please be seated. The agenda has been passed, signed. This meeting is being recorded and available on DCTV. And we have no appointments, so the first item on the agenda, we have the aquaculture license renewal. We want you to come up to the... All right, state your name and basically tell everybody what you do.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Scott Sores, I'm here with my mother, Mary Sylvia Antunes, and we're here to renew our aquaculture license over in Pedenarum Harbor. We're just off of Ricketson's Point. I think the first time around, we had a two-year license, started in 2022, and we're looking to renew for five years at this point.
Okay, and this is Pedenarum Oyster Farm LLC?
That's correct, yeah.
All right. So does Mr. Caravana have anything to do with the...
Not anymore. We bought the farm and everything that went with it. It sounds funny saying that, bought the farm. It feels that way some days, farming is not easy. But we purchased the farm from Steve Beck in the tail end of 2021, and then we came before the board early 2022, got the first license for two years, and that year, time has gone by, hard to believe.
You're still having fun, huh?
Well, some days. Today wasn't so bad, we actually just launched a new tractor, or our boat, in other words, because we had to replace the original boat that we had, and I've learned just how expensive and how many oysters it costs to buy a new boat. But we have another boat now, we just launched today. We've had a great relationship with Trip and Davis and Trip Marina, and the shellfish constable, Steve Mello, has been really helpful for us all the way along the way. So so far, it's working okay, the oysters are doing what they're supposed to do. Now, we need to do what we need to do and sell more oysters at this point is where we're at.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members have any other questions?
No, my only other question is, with the... We seem to be closing the shellfish beds, and how have you been impacted by that?
Significantly. We're down about 60% in revenue since last year. We have been working... I also work with the Aquaculture Association in Massachusetts, and we have another farmer over in Matapoisette in Fairhaven, West Island Oysters, Dale Levitt, who we've also been working with him to work with the state to ultimately get at a more reasonable regulatory approach to what we're doing right now. What ultimately happened is there was a change in interpretation on what's called the National Sanitary Shellfish Program, that nothing else changed but that interpretation. That basically means every time it rains, thereabouts, we're closed. So at this point, we've been closed since January, a total of just about 150 days, which, as I mentioned, has had a significant impact on the business. We're still hard at it, and the challenge is that we buy our oysters a year in advance as seed, so we really can't slow the roll at this point, we need to continue to stock, you know, the oysters and keep growing them, and ultimately harvest and sell when we can. That's worked out fairly well, we've had some good, you know, relations with some businesses in town, but I also have moved some oysters out to Western Mass, even as far as MGM, the casino, and some restaurants and breweries out in Western Mass at the same time, so... But it has been a significant impact for us, but we're sticking with it, and so far, so far, like I said, so good. The oysters are working well, but the sales have been significantly impacted.
Okay. Board, pleasure.
You got David's question. Can you, just technical question?
Sure.
I don't know if I'm... See if I can mumble this through, but can you tell the difference in the way the oysters function or the quality of the water in terms of how you observe and what goes on?
No, there's no visible impact. I mean, the oysters, right now, they're getting pretty big, the ones that I have on the farm at this point. We buy large seed to begin with, and I know that, you know, compared to some growers down the Cape where they have tidal cycles so that their oysters are exposed completely at low tide, my oysters are in the water all the time. So we have about an 18-month growth cycle to get at all of the oysters from one-year class, but the waters are so productive that we've had some oysters that are ready for market, they go in the water the end of May, early June, at about a half an inch, and they're already to, some of them, maybe 15 to 20%, are at a market size of two and a half to three inches by the early, early July of the same year, so it's really fast.
So your problem is, they may be ready, but you can't take them out because there's a...
That's right, that's right. So it's, we have to work around the closures that Marine Fisheries imposes because of this. It's really a combined sewer overflow issue from the city of New Bedford, that we're also trying to work with them to see what we can't do to help, you know, them with any kind of legislative support, to help move so that they can stop with any of the discharges that they currently have. Because like I said, it's not only impacting our farm, but it's impacting five or six other farms from us going to the eastern part of Buzzards Bay over Matapoisette, Fairhaven.
Can the oysters take on any kind of water it consumes?
Oh, yeah, they'll filter. In fact, an adult oyster will filter 50 gallons of water in a day.
No matter how bad or good the water is.
No matter how bad or good the water quality is, that's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And by the way, I'd be happy if anyone ever wants to come out and, you know, check out what we do, we'd love to have folks come out and we could coordinate with the board or through the shellfish constable if y'all want to come out and see what we do and how we do it.
Sounds good. Want anybody else? Want some pleasure?
Motion to approve the five-year renewal.
A motion made by Mr. Mickelson, is there a second?
Mrs. Brooks.
Second made by Mrs. Brooks on the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, none unanimous, good luck.
Great. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Thanks, have a good night.
2029.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have a breast cancer awareness proclamation. Whereas in 2024, an estimated 310,720 women and 2,800 men will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, and whereas one in eight women in approximately 13% of the female population in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime, and where an estimated 42,250 women and 530 US men in America will die from breast cancer in 2024, and whereas approximately 15% of the women diagnosed have a family history of breast cancer, and whereas currently over 4 million breast cancer survivors in the United States, and whereas the good health and well-being of residents of Dartmouth are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness and regular screening, as women who do not, who receive regular screenings for breast cancer have a 26% lower breast cancer death rate than most, than women who do not. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in the Dartmouth, Massachusetts Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Dartmouth, and on behalf of all of the Select Board, we urge all citizens in Dartmouth to be, to recognize this event and participate fiddlingly in its observance. And it's signed by all of us, and it's basically, this is it.
Someone was supposed to get a picture, so I will do that for Magnolia.
Are you here for this? Okay. Yep, this will be...
So I'm gonna give you the next one. So here, take, you take a picture, Sean will hand it to me.
Okay.
And... Make sure it's the right side. All right.
Not upside down.
Take a picture.
Take the picture of Heidi, just get my hand. Okay? Got it?
Good. All right.
All right. All right. The next one?
Yeah.
It's a new wheelhouse, somewhat, unfortunately. All right, so our next proclamation is a domestic violence awareness proclamation. Whereas in the United States, nearly every one and two women and more than every two and five men reported experience intimate partner violence at some point in their lifetime, and whereas more than 16 million people in the US suffer from intimate partner abuse per year, and whereas one in four men in the United States have endured severe physical violence from an intimate partner, and whereas one in five women in the United States reported any contact with sexual violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime, and whereas to break the cycle of intergenerational trauma through education, therapeutic recovery and healing, community building, supportive services, and legal interventions, to prevent children who have witnessed domestic violence from internalizing or replicating these behaviors as adults, and whereas to seek help in situations of domestic violence, call the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-7233, or local, or the local A New Day of Health Imperatives Hotline at 508-588-8255. Now therefore, by the virtue of the authority vested in the Select Board, we do hereby also proclaim this month to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the town of Dartmouth, and we urge all citizens to participate and observe, not to participate.
I'll turn around for the camera so they can all see it. There you go.
And Sean, fake this again, because I think it'll look better on the side. We look squished.
Things that we do.
Do I take it from... Okay, so...
All right.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, doesn't matter.
Thank you, no, thank you.
Okay.
All right, yeah, so I figured. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the request for opera locations, allocations. We have requests from the Parks and Recreation, Border Health, and the DPW, and Select Board.
Yeah, the Select Board. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, as you mentioned, right now, we have some money that's still sitting in the, what's called the revenue replacement for opera, not the county money, which is about $449,000. This will draw that down to about, we'll have a balance of like $217,000 in that account if the board approves these tonight. We have, as you know, approved some over the course of the last few months, and we have the department heads to discuss their requests. So we can start off, the first one's actually facilities for $18,500.
Let's see, who we're gonna... I'll go with Mr. Lancaster.
Hi. So, yeah, that's actually a facilities truck that we're talking about, a town hall truck, not a park truck. We went to get to the DPW for a sticker this month, or I think around the first week of October, and they were unable to put a sticker on it, justly so, because the bed is actually heavily rotted out. We couldn't see it because it has one of those drop-in bed liners, so everything looked great, truck's in good shape, but when they looked under it and then they showed it to me, I understand exactly where they're coming from. That truck's an essential truck here, it's the primary police department plow vehicle, and it's shared, we obviously, we use it across all departments here, but the frame of the truck is in perfect shape, the engine's in great shape, it's got, I think it's mid-40s for a mileage, which is really good, we can easily get another 10 years out of that truck. And the reason why we're looking for this $18,500 is I don't want to put a, we're not gonna put a pickup truck bed, it's an F-350, we're not gonna put a pickup bed, we're gonna put a compartment body truck with a lift gate on it, because if we ever, if we get that facilities foreman onboard, that would be his vehicle, be able to carry tools around and so forth to go from building to building. So it's kind of a little of both, we can, we can improve the vehicle and get it back roadworthy, worthy in time for snow this winter, hopefully, so...
Kind of makes sense. May I ask a question? When you get the new body on it, you're gonna have it...
Oiled underneath, like that coating? Yeah, yeah, and we're also gonna, instead of doing, you know, obviously, this truck won't have a drop-in bed liner, but we're gonna have it rhino-lined inside, so, because we do put, and I'm glad DPW did their due diligence and saw this, because that truck gets a ballast in the back when it does plow, and it's a cement block we put in the back of all the pickups when we plow for ballast to offset the plow, it would've gone right through, it would've gone right through. And like I tell you, the truck looks great from the outside, so until you actually get it on a lift and look under it, you never would've known anything was wrong with it. So we think that, we think that over the years, the water got in between the bed, that drop-in bed liner, possibly some salt, because the custodians sometimes would put salt buckets back there in the winter, go salt sidewalks, probably got under there and did its damage without us ever knowing it, so...
All right, so let me ask this question. I don't think this really pertains much to the DPW, but any other trucks that you use for plowing, have you visually inspected them to make sure that they're okay?
Yeah, they all go, they all get that, they all go to DPW for those inspections, so they all go through that, that same process, so the other, you know, the kind of sister truck to that is the stakebody truck, which we were looking at town meeting to replace. That's the same, they were bought by Dave Cressman, bought those two trucks at the same exact time, so that's the next oldest vehicle we have in the town hall fleet. We're actually, we've got the funds for that, our intent was to replace that truck, we knew that truck was getting close with the body for next year, we threw it ahead this year and got CIP to go with it, try to get a diesel engine chassis in time before, come January 1st, you're not gonna be able to get diesel engine chassis anymore, so we were trying to get that under the gun. May or may not happen, we're gonna kind of wait and see, there's somewhere out there that might be a municipal exemption going through, once, once people realize the impact that's gonna have on cities and towns and how they, the fact that they can't operate. So we're gonna kind of watch that, I've talked to the dealers, and we're gonna kind of keep an eye on that truck for now. Worst-case scenario, I'm thinking there's gonna be a municipal exemption, I just don't see city, big cities and towns being able to not, to pull this off with no infrastructure improvements, I just don't see it, I think there'll be a municipal exemption, but in the event there isn't, I think we're gonna look into alternatives similar to this for that truck, because again, they're great chassis, they're great motors, and, you know, they easily have 10, 10 or more years left in those trucks, so we'll keep an eye on that one.
Sounds good. Board members have any questions on this request?
No, I, well, go ahead.
Tim, are we sure we know the extent of the bed itself? Because sometimes what happens is you take it off, and all of a sudden, you know...
Yeah, so we've looked at it pretty closely, we've had the, you know, we've gone out for pricing to get it repaired, we've had those guys come look at it as well, they've inspected it, so they're pretty confident, it's the bed and the cross rails, the frame is in real good shape, so...
Okay, good.
I just wanted to thank you for explaining it, because in looking at the price, there's a big difference between a regular bed and the bed that you explained, so thank you for explaining it.
I think if we're gonna do it, we may as well make that move to that other body at this point with what we, future of that vehicle, so...
Again, what's the turnaround for this?
So, you know, once you folks approve it, I'll get back on the phone to them tomorrow. I'm hoping to get it by the end of the calendar year, so, and, you know, if we keep weather like this, we'll be okay, because who would've thought it would've been 75 degrees out today in the end of October, so, you know, I'm hoping we get it at least by the end of the calendar year back here, so...
Title bomb, anything? Okay, all right, thanks, Tim.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next request is the surface water sampling. Border Health.
Mr. Michaud. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board, Christopher Michaud, Director of Public Health for the record. So the Border Health has put in a request for $10,000 for sampling. The sampling is to follow up on that conversation that we had so often, beginning about two years ago in this room, and concluding sometime around the summer of 2023, with respects to the Slocombe River and the Westport River, because those two estuaries have watersheds that extend mostly or partly into the town of Dartmouth. We know that Mass DEP backed off in their initial ambitious proposal with the septic regulations to target off-Cape communities. And I remember a statement in this room where there was a lot of interest in, let's look at this river, because the Slocombe's River particularly, because we were most familiar with that approval document, that began data collection in 2000 and concluded in 2006. The last sampling on the Slocombe's River for total nitrogen for the study was over 18 years ago. We know that it takes many years, sometimes decades, for water to work through watersheds and get to the beginning of the estuary that that study measured. We know that a prior administration was very ambitious and successful with searing hundreds of homes in that watershed, as well as the Westport River watershed. So part of this proposal is to allow us to begin sampling the Slocombe River. And let's find out, with our own data, how the Slocombe's River is performing. Additionally, in May of this year, we found out about another outdated DEP initiative with the pathogen-impaired draft proposal to the EPA. It was appalling that they sat on... River, which runs through the middle of our most productive aquifer in town. We've done a little bit of testing on that river this year, and because of the cooler temperatures, we're having to back off. Spent a lot of time in there, up to my waist in mud, worrying that I'd go further, trying to retrieve samples, and getting results in that limited time of the warmer weather. The results are horrifying. We are not seeing those levels in Clark's Cove, where there's a CSO, actually, multiple CSOs. So, the other part of this request is to allow for us to continue to sample that, to try to pinpoint and dial in where this is coming from. But what I can say is, it really seems like it's coming from the Route 6 corridor. And looking at how that river responds to rain events, it's starting to function largely as a drainpipe for Route 6 in the retail corridor, which is extremely concerning. And that also goes back to our Slocom's River, so, you know, I respectfully request that amount, it'll allow us to hopefully dive into both of these systems, which are actually one major system, and have a baseline on the Slocom's at the end of next summer, and maybe dial in on where this hotspot is with the Pasca Manska.
Is $10,000 enough?
It's minimal. I'm trying to be respectful to the other wishes and needs of the town, I may have to shift, if I had a little more money, I may be able to dial into more specific testing on the Pasca Manska. And Mr. Chandler, at the end of town meeting, was asking me about the Shingle Island, because the Shingle Island is also due to be designated, and we haven't focused on that, because that's not the, that's, we don't have the Shingle Island running by our town wells. So, if there was an opportunity for more?
Let me ask this question.
That'd be helpful.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna sound flippant or omnipotent, but would 25,000 do you well?
That would be more than enough.
That's my suggestion to the board. Mr. Titlebomb?
My understanding, and I'm no scientist or engineer, that we're always trying to learn from the Buttonwood Brook, and all the work we've done with, that you've done with the help of the Buzzes Bay Coalition, that we're trying to, to discover what the real problems are there, and then try to use some of that information technique to move on to the rivers you just mentioned. So, it seems like the more information, and if I'm correct in saying this, it seems like the more information we can get on those three entities you talked about, then we can then maybe set a course, that we could then make a plan in terms of how bad it is and where it's coming from, so that, I'm echoing what the chairman talking about, and I, I think it, is it your group, or another group, or a consultant group come in and do a comprehensive study that would give us the information we need to then go ahead and make a short and long-term plan of what we're gonna do? Is that appropriate at this point in time?
I think we have an obligation to figure out what's going on now, because all too often, we try to wait for the complete diagnostic, and I, you know, I, I am gonna be sympathetic to the draft TMDL, which later became the approved EPA TMDL for the Slocom River. These are major reports, and it takes a lot of time. But it's like taking my cholesterol 15 years ago and thinking it's the same now.
So, I'm gonna rephrase my question. What can we do in the short term with the most amount of money to get the quickest amount of information as quick as we can?
On the Slocom's, let's get a baseline, let's get a comprehensive, intensive baseline next summer, beginning in the late spring of next year through the end of the summer on all aspects, asymmetry with the tidal cycles, and very intensely across the river. I have some concerns about the locations where they've tested. And there are other things that we need to be looking at, that we can start to look at with that intense regimen.
What about the Pasca Manska?
The Pasca Manska, that's gonna be a, chase it into the branches. We've, we've really done a lot of testing on the trunk of the Pasca Manska, and we're gonna have, this winter, we're gonna be looking into where those branches are, are there drain branches in the Pasca Manska? Because we're not getting high readings north of 195.
So, I mean, belabor this, but I think this is really important, obviously important, but are you able to do, through your Border Health, to make these tests, to give you the information you're satisfied with at some point, that we can then act? Is that what you're saying?
The testing will, you know, if, you know, if, we're gonna, you know, start looking at engineering plans to start chasing the branches, and that will determine where we test next year. Bacteriological tests are very temperature-sensitive, so we, we don't want to be testing those now. The waters have cooled substantially, even though it was 75 today, so we really will not be able to test until late May of next year.
So, would the appropriate motion be that we allow up to, up to $25,000 to do as much as we can with the Slocom and the Pasca Manska, at this point in time, to satisfy the study you're gonna do next spring? Is that the motion?
If we want to get a baseline on, on the Slocom's, and if we want to try to figure out what the problem is in the Pasca Manska, yes.
Is that, is that motion would satisfy what you're talking about?
Yes.
If we include the, increase the money, would we also be able to get some testing in Shingle Island?
Yes, absolutely.
I think it's important to look at all of those.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, we don't have to do anything at this time, because when we make a motion to do the whole funds, we can, we can change it then.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. All right, next is the DPW, we have requests for two Opera funds, which is the 579 Old Westport Road Water Treatment Facility Upgrade and the Rate and Efficiency Study Contract.
Chairman, could I just ask, could I ask a question just before he starts? There's, there's over $200,000 remaining, is what I think you said?
Right now, $217,000 after the initial request.
Right, and what, okay.
If we add the $15,000 to the Border Health's request, it'll be $202,000.
That 200,000 has to be spent when, and we're at any risk of not spent, not allocating and they're losing it?
No.
Okay.
Because it's revenue replacement, the Bristol County money, the Opera money, that's where we'd be on the deadline too.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tim.
Good evening, Tim Barber, Department of Public Works, thank you for having me. I have two requests, one is for the 579 Old Westport Road Water Treatment Facility Upgrades, where we had submitted a request for funding initially through Bristol County Opera, and that original estimate had a contingency built in, a 10% contingency, but the county informed us that they don't allow contingencies, so we reduced by that 10%, and we recently held the bid opening, and the low bidder came in at $2,594,000, where the, the Opera Award was awarded at $2,518,000, which is $76,600 less. So, with that, I'm requesting an addition, that additional supplemental funding, the $76,600. And we're looking to award this project this coming Thursday at our Board of Public Works meeting, as the, the county had given us a, an extension to awards of projects until November 12th.
Okay. And then the rate efficiency study?
Yeah, the second one, so the rate efficiency study contract, originally, it was funded through $30,000 through Water and Sewer Enterprise, $30,000 through Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise, $35,000 through the DPW Admin CIP, and they recently submitted an amendment for additional work on the, on the project, on the study, and, and we added additional presentations, and threw another $27,000.
Okay, so the total you're looking for is $103,600?
Correct.
Okay. Board members have any questions on DPW requests?
A quick question myself.
Go ahead.
On the water treatment facility upgrade, is that a, would you call that a long-term improvement, and what we get out of that in terms of, is this short or long-term in terms of what we'll get out of that?
Absolutely, it adds a lot of redundant CT time, so chemical treatment time, so we're adding a pipe system, which will, which will improve the, the, I guess, water quality, and ensure that it's, it's safe to drink before it gets out to the distribution system. And if we have any, any bacterial hits in the wells, like we have had in the Peneli Wells, and those wells are currently off because of that hit, and the groundwater rule requires a boil water order in order to turn those wells back on, unless you have forlog or a CT pipe, so this'll ensure that protection, so if we do have that, as long as we sample, and the samples come back negative after we treat the well, we can continue pumping.
So, this is not like some of the changes, the money, short-term money we're putting into the sewer treatment, which is trying to get us through the short term, so we can then look at the, whatever master program we end up doing?
Right, no.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I just want to say.
Ms. Brooks?
Whether we're looking at a short term or a long term, at this point, this is a Band-Aid. This is a Band-Aid product to fix something that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, well, the, the groundwater rule changed through the years, and, you know, years ago, plants weren't required to have CT or forlog, and then if you, if you did have, you know, a bacterial hit historically, and you sanitized and retested, you were able to come back online, but you can't do that anymore, you know, the DEP regulations have changed, and now, in order to bring those back online, you have to have this infrastructure in place, so it's not really a Band-Aid, it's upgrading the infrastructure to meet today's needs, yeah.
Has this been the biggest problem with the wells, being down?
Yeah, two of our wells, yeah.
How long have they been down?
Probably about a year and a half.
Which is why we were buying water.
It was a result of a heavy rainstorm, remember that rainstorm, we got about six inches of rain, and then we believe we had some, some intrusion, which contaminated the well, so.
Where are the wells again, the ones that are contaminated?
What's that?
Where, with locations?
That was the Peneli Wells, and we had a bacterial hit.
Remember also, we also had to purchase additional water from the city, that ended up costing us even more.
Oh, that, so it was a kind of a combined issue, where at the time of the storm, we were down the two Violetta Wells for reconstruction, so we were reconstructing those wells, but the 579 Old Westport Road Plant was still operating, and then after that storm, that was an October storm, that put us down two more wells, and we couldn't run the plant with that little water coming in with one, one well field, so we had to shut down completely and purchase a lot of water at that time.
Any other questions, Tim?
I have no questions, but I want to make a statement, in looking at, at not only this, the DPW request, but also the Board of Health request, and the, and the facilities request, all of these, we're very fortunate to have Opera money. None of these things that we are talking about tonight are nice-to-haves, they are all needed. And looking ahead at what we have spent Opera funny, Opera money on, there have not been nice-to-haves, they've all been things that we've needed. Opera money is going away, and we still have these needs, so I'm just projecting that as we continue to go forward, and looking at, you know, entering this next budget season, we need to have our departments looking at what they need, and their budgets need to reflect the true needs of their department.
Well, three out of four projects have to do with water, so, because you missed the fourth one, which is on the second page of the agenda, which is the $100,000 matching.
Yes.
So, if anybody has any more questions of?
Rate and efficiency study, when do you expect that to finish up?
So, the, so the amended contract, I think it gave another seven months, but I think they'll be done before then, but that was, that's a projection.
Which brings us to when?
Seven months brings us to May of next year.
May, yeah.
Oh, from now, seven months, additional months from now.
So, okay, all right, thank you, Tim.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, the last request, of course, is the, is the $100,000 that the board had previously discussed to match the Buzzes Bay Coalition for the, to connect the homes.
So, yeah, when Dan Goulart gave his presentation about three meetings ago, he had, the chair had asked if a complement to that would help include more, more systems, and so I think the number that was discussed at the time was about $100,000.
Would be 80 homes, right, it'd be an additional 80 homes.
Yeah.
So, we're getting to that project, so, Mr. Titlebomb?
Do you know where we stand with the town council's return of the MOA for this project? On the, for the original, the original project we approved?
Oh. Have we received that from town council?
We have not received the draft MOA as of yet, but I'll follow up tomorrow with their office.
I got a recent call from Dan.
Yeah, he reached out to me as well.
He sounds like he's, he's itching, so could we give a little push to our town council?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so the board, we need to act on these four requests, the requests would be $18,500 for the truck body replacement, $25,000 for the surface water sampling, $103,600 for the request for the five, for the water treatment facility upgrades and the rate efficiency study, and $100,000 for the Buzzes Bay Coalition Connect Program, for a total of, excuse me, $247,100, which, I mean, sorry, 23, where am I? I got too many numbers here. Twenty, yeah, $247,100, right, that would be, what would be, and then the balance would be $201,900. So, go ahead, Mr. Michaud.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, for the record, Christopher Michaud, Director of Public Health for the town of Dartmouth. You know, Mr. Goulart has approached the Health Department about this program, I think it's great. I understand that the Buzzet Bay Coalition's grant from the EPA is very targeted to one area, which is the Apoganset. But since this was first discussed a few weeks ago at this meeting, a few people have reached out to the Health Department to inquire, and I know at least one person did reach out to Mr. Goulart as well, in an area of Dartmouth where someone has to tie in and wouldn't be eligible through their grant. So, I would just, you know, like to, you know, advise the board that we do have other areas in town where a lot of people need to connect, the importance of them connecting is still just as great, so if there was an opportunity to broaden this, to, you know, using the same parameters that Mr. Goulart, I know the questions are gonna continue to come in. Thank you.
I have a comment on that as well, I have a comment on that as well, we have, there are many homes, according to Mr. Goulart, that, that are not connected, but they're in very, they're places where people can afford, absolutely afford, to do the hookup on their own. And there, there's no, he and I had talked about the fact that maybe we could reach out to these residents, and maybe they, in terms of telling them how bad it is, that their system in a big home is so close to the water, that maybe it's about time they regroup and, and maybe we can encourage them to hook up, and there's a number of homes in that category. So, I don't know the best way to approach that, but there's significant amount of homes, and I think that if we could wake them up and tell them what, how bad it is and what's going on, maybe we can simulate a few of them to hook up on their own.
Well, I think probably necessary would be to find out which homes they are.
He knows.
Get a, get a list together, and then just bring them in for a little group chat, you know?
I thought we identified 11 that failed.
Well, he had identified.
Those, those are different, those are the ones that are, the systems are, don't exist, horrible, and doing, and they're.
I thought he said last time he was here that they were now gonna be included, no?
So, Mr., so the Buzzet Bay Coalition is particular to the Apoganset watershed, and we have the Westport River watershed, there are people along Route 6, Lake Nokachoke, that still haven't connected some 20 years after. Those sewer tie-ins in 1998 along Nokachoke, that might've been $2,500. Those sewer tie-ins in 1998 along Nokachoke that might have been $2,500 are in the five-figure range today. We have Slocom River as well. We have people on Old Westport Road, one of them that needs to, at this time, facing an $18,000 connection, gravity connection. So, it's very expensive to them. So, you know, you know, there are, we've been looking in the Health Department since the whole Title V issue sunsetted for the day, but we know that the, you know, the sun will rise again on this very issue. We've been looking at our records as well, not only with the Slocom River and seeing what we can do, but also our existing records, care of Miss Ally Amaral, going through everything. And we know there's hundreds of people that need to connect in town, hundreds, in all of these watersheds.
But these are people who've already, they're paid.
They've paid for their abatement out in front of the house, years, years, decades before.
Eleven that, Chris, you are talking about, I believe, that were under, they were totally failed systems that you've been dealing with through the Board of Health, is that correct?
The town has a mandate, so let me just back up a little bit. Back in the 90s, when the town was looking to extend sewer aggressively to try to protect our coastal resources, to try to protect Lake Nokachoke, how are we going to do it? If we put the pipe in the street, then, you know, nobody connects. So, there was a one-year mandate, and the majority of people did. But given the vast acreage, given all the watersheds, when we look at it collectively, we're still looking at a couple hundred households that need to connect.
I think we can't lose sight of the fact that this grant is through the Buzzards Bay Coalition on the, on the Apoganset, and therefore, we should, we should do all we can to get those hooked up, because that's where the grant money is for that. I sympathize with people out in those areas you mentioned, but that grant is not going to cover those homes.
Right, but the OPERA money could be broader, is the question that I keep getting from the public.
Can it be broader?
I don't know, that's, you know, but if we're going to be piggybacking on that, can it expand more broader, is the question I ask the Board.
Well, locally, why can't we do it locally? Expand it on our own?
Well, this one, we're getting money out of, out of OPERA. This, we're asking the money from OPERA.
Correct.
In my notes, we were talking about potentially looking at free cash to match the grant. So, and looking back, we had 11 properties that are being mandated to tie in, and this work that we had, the money that Buzzards Bay Coalition, the current fee to tie in was $2,500. There would be a reduced connection fee from the DPW, and we'd get it for $1,500. And these properties would be then, using that money, two-thirds of the properties are pre-Title V, 80 properties, and we have enough money just for 40 homes right now.
Right.
So, we also have a second tier of the houses that are on the water, and a third tier of remaining houses. So, we're no shortage of, of houses that need to tie in.
Right, well, with, with the additional homes that Mr. Michaud is talking about, it almost has to be, it almost has to be a separate program. And that program has to, can piggyback and look like what Buzzards Bay is doing on the Apoganset watershed. So, what we, so I guess the, the charge at this time would be for our co-town administrators and our health director to sit down and figure out what homes need to be discussed in this additional program, and then let's look at what, what the Buzzards Bay program is looking at, how we can piggyback or clone it for a Dartmouth-owned program for Slocom and Nokachoke area, and see what kind of funding we can help with. If we do any kind of funding, I would like the eligibility to be income-based.
Yes.
So that it's, so that if there's any seniors out there who have homes that need the assistance, you know, that's where I'd like to see it go first, or, or individuals who, you know, I want it to be income-driven.
The homes he, the homes he picked-
For the homeowner, the homeowner.
The homes he picked were all income-driven.
Right, I don't-
This is what, this is what, this is what it's important, because, I mean, I was part of that Lake Nokachoke sewer system I connected, because, yeah, I, we had problems, you know, we lived near a lake, the lake, the water, you know, we had a bubbling crude, and it wasn't oil, so that's for sure. So, I mean, I don't understand why people didn't tie in. I mean, it's, you have it in front of you, you have less problems, you know?
So, Sean-
Go ahead.
So, it was a matching, it was matching, $25,000 that he originally came to us for was, was the town's match on, on the grants that he had available to him, correct?
It was, no, it was $100,000 that he had for the Apoganset to do 40 homes.
And he came to us for the $25,000?
It was-
No, I have for a thousand, $100,000.
No, I had, I had proposed to match it, to get more homes involved in that, because it is, because of the watershed, to increase it to 80.
Yeah, and Dan had said we could do an additional 40 for them.
My question is, on the other side of that equation, does he have the funds to do it with the 80 with our match to it?
He was getting a grant from EPA for FY '26 for $100,000.
Right, for the original $25,000 that-
He has-
It's a hundred. Right. So, my, my question is, if it's a match, if it's a percentage of the grant that he has coming in on the other side, can we go up from our, from the original request from 25 to 100? Does it make sense?
Well, we were looking, right now, we were looking to take it from free cash, okay? And-
Right, but the question is, can he use it? I mean, you know?
He needs to have the match to be able to pull it off.
Right.
Well, I also think-
In order to do the 80, he needs to have the 100 from, from this.
Needs to have also-
Or else you'll only do 40.
That same criteria. And I think what we're talking about is giving him the money so he can work with that, but do we create, and correct me if I'm wrong, another source of funding for another group that is not tied into the strings that the grant that he's working with-
Yeah.
And the area that he's working with.
And that would be, that would not be through Buzzards Bay, this would be through the town, through the Board of Health.
Through the town.
So, because of the, because of this newer information received, I think it's more important, I think it's important that we begin the discussion and the development of this program between the two corner town administrators and the Board of Health for the Nokachoke watershed and for the Slocom watershed.
That, that requires a grant writing to get that match.
If it's, if we can do it through grant to start, yes, and if we need to do it through free cash to, to begin with, because we know, this is going to take a long process, you know, then let's do it.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, I think that Chris and I could also work on, with Chris from the Department of Health, looking at what systems, we have a failed septic system program in town, so maybe we, maybe we coordinate that, and then, as the chair said, we put some money in the springtime as we start to develop this process through free cash, maybe it's $100,000, or whatever that number is.
My understanding, those 11 systems are failed systems-
Failed, right.
That Dan was not touching, was, he claimed that it was going through the Board of Health.
Correct. Yeah, and I think that we, I think that that's a good exercise to go through, is looking at those systems.
And I'll just- So, right now, just, yeah, I just want to back up a little bit, you know, on the failed systems, there, we don't have any, a few of them may be failed, but these are just people that are required to tie in because of the availability of sewer. There's the local town regulation that says, when the sewer goes by in front of your house, if it's a common sewer, then you have to connect within a year. And just to kind of go back to something that was mentioned earlier about the people on the waterfront, this past summer, coincidentally, and the reason why I said common will reveal itself in a second, Star of the Sea had two homes that came up for sale. Star of the Sea has a sewer line in there that was put in right around 10 years ago. So, you got to connect. The sellers did not want to connect. I get it. We all like money in our pocket. I understand it. Long and the short, it came out that it's not a common sewer, it's a private sewer. So, we could not order them to connect to sewer. So, those systems pass. And they transferred title, and they did so under compliance with the state regulations and the town. So, why I just mentioned that is that it just reveals that, you know, when it comes down to it, that people are all making these decisions financially for one reason or another. It's hard. And it gets back to what Mr. McDonald said just a few moments ago, a lot of people did connect because they had problems, but a lot of people, you know, a few hundred across all these watersheds didn't, and they've gotten by to this point. So, it'd be great to remove them, because we would make even more substantial gains. And I think what Mr. Gulat is proposing in the Apoganset is amazing, it's, it's creative, it helps take some of the sting out of it, it incentivizes, it increases the value to the people in the long run, and it improves the watershed the minute that they get connected. And I think that's how we're going to have to look at this going forward.
I, I think it's, it's almost a marketing program, people who are in, on top of a watershed, sewer going down through the house in a nice, healthy neighborhood, we need to reach out to them, explain to them that they are destroying that watershed, because that system is probably half-operating, this is just not, it's not right. And we need to reach out to them in a way that we can say, can you help us out? This is not right.
Well, the first thing we need to do, the first thing we need to do is, is get the program up and running to get it emulated for us, and then also to identify those homes in those particular watersheds.
Hundred percent. He knows, and he knows which ones they are.
So, that was one of my concerns, Sean, was, was when he came in originally asking for X to get the program up and running, and they, you know, it was basically our contribution for the, for the grant match. He had the, the houses set, the number that he could do.
Correct.
So, my, my first inclination is to, let, let's go with that program. Number one, let's see if it works before we throw more money at it, let's make sure it's working, it's effective, it's efficient. And then, if, like you said, if we want to go after those, those 11 with a separate program, work with Chris on those 11, or, or do it age-based, needs-based, then, as a separate thing, then I think that would be appropriate. But I'm just, I want to make sure that the program's working the way that he set it up first, before we take any money out of free cash, I guess. And I think that's what you're saying, too. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I think what we do is we, we, this goes through, and we, we have Buzzards Bay work on their program, and I think Mr. O'Neill's point, we use that as a benchmark to then address the other properties in town that need it, and then, then maybe take the funding out of free cash in the spring.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that-
Right, yeah.
That we want it to work, and we'll definitely invest in it, because it's, you know, obviously needed, but-
We'll have those funds available.
I'd like to see how the trial goes first, I guess.
And I just want to include in that conversation with the co-inter-town administrators, and Chris Michaud also include Tim Barber from DPW to talk about what that looks like in real time and, and that connectedness.
He would be, he would be more instrumental in capacity.
Right, but also, I just want to state for the record that there are some homes in Dartmouth that are by the water, that do not have a sewer line running by them, and are not going to be connected anytime soon, for a lot of reasons. So, I don't want anyone thinking that it's not fair that they have to when they don't have to. Right now, there are some parts near water that do not even have a sewer line. They may never have a sewer line.
Not part of the conversation.
Right.
Agreed.
So, what's the Board's pleasure on this?
Well, first, let's go back to the actual items that you had said, so I'm going to make a motion that we take from the current OPERA funds available to us, our request for allocations for facilities, the truck for $18,500, surface water sampling for the Board of Health increased to $25,000.
Heidi?
Oops, yes.
So, Chris, you, you said that's more than enough, $25,000. Is it more than enough, or is it perfect?
That is perfect.
$25,000, we'll do it, okay.
And whatever he doesn't use gets returned?
Gets returned. $103,600 for the DPW, and $100,000 for the Buzzards Bay Coalition Connect to Protect Program, for a total of, if my math was correct, $247,100.
I would add, Chris O'Neill, that I think that we can leave it to Dan, and maybe he's going to require another visit back here, that if he can work that program, the OPERA money's available, and it all fits, and it makes sense, great. If it doesn't, we don't spend the money.
Right, it'll be returned.
Up to $100,000.
It'll be returned.
It'll be returned.
But not, not, this is not a, this is not a giveaway. It has to be part of that program if he can do it.
Up to, yeah.
Right, up to, yeah.
So, that was my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Right, motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? None unanimous?
Okay.
All right. Terrific. Thank you all.
Enjoy.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have the Town Hall Flag Collection Box.
Mr. Chairman, so, as you know, the Eagle Scouts built that box out front, and there's a little bit of damage to it, but Chris had looked out for other boxes, we worked with the Veterans Agent, and one of the, actually, one of the websites that you had sent us, there's, there's the basic box, and I, and I'm just giving this by experience, we have the collection boxes out there for the real estate tax, the library books, they are stainless steel. I know there's one here that's aluminum. Stainless steel pretty much lasts forever. And this is quoted at $2,090, and the delivery for $98, it has a U.S. flag on the outside, does say-
You can install them on the present pad.
The pad would have to be redesigned.
So, I did have a conversation with Matt about that, and his recommendation is to relocate the pad here at Town Hall to where other drop boxes are located. That way, people can drive up to it, they don't have to gather cars and traverse the terrain over there.
Do we have room?
I did just talk to Tim Barber briefly, and he did believe that we can make that work.
Isn't that, isn't that short area there?
The only, yeah, the only suggestion that I have, and just out of, is the last parking spot next to the boxes-
Yes.
Should be cordoned off, because if there's a large vehicle, such as-
Can't get to the box.
Such as a DCTV truck.
Pickup truck.
Or a Mr. McDonald-
Or, or an F-150.
Yeah.
Or something like that, it's, it blocks somebody's coming in, and they have to come in at an odd angle.
I could work with Tim and Tim on maybe some solutions for that piece of it.
Yeah.
There's something to take a look at, and plus the fact that if you need the room, there's your room. So, sorry, Peter. Blame Mike.
Five smaller cars.
Okay, thank you.
Five smaller cars.
Before we talk about, as we talk about which flag box makes sense to purchase, do we also have a plan for, when that was, when the box was put in for the Eagle Scouts?
Matt will take care of it.
So, now Matt Brule, the Veterans Agent, will take care of the-
He'll take care of it.
Personally take care of it.
That's, that was my concern.
All right. And just one note on the which one, Matt did point out on that website that Gary mentioned, the large exterior flag retirement drop box-
Right.
And he had a personal liking to the Iwo Jima decal.
Okay. You can change the dec, if you go on the web, you can change the decal.
Yeah, you can change whatever you want.
Just let him put what he'd like in there, to be honest with you.
Yeah, the large exterior, as long as it's the exterior one, so.
So, maybe, maybe the Board will make a motion to, for us to purchase it, and we can go from there.
Up to, what does that price again, 25?
I would say up to maybe $2,500, just to give us some leeway.
But we want to make sure we include the shipping.
That includes, that would include.
That include the shipping. Do we need to also include anything else, the pad or the installation? That's going to be all done in-house?
Yeah, pad will be done in-house.
And this is the stainless steel, not the aluminum?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the one we want.
So, do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
All right, is there a second? Motion made by Mr., Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Is there any questions on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous.
All right, get that taken care of. All right, next item on the agenda, to discuss and potentially approve a new host community agreement for solar therapeutics for retail marijuana establishment for retail sales at 493 Ford's Corner Road. This is here because the state said our previous host agreement was not good, and now we have the state telling us exactly what we have to do, or, excuse me, the Cannabis Control So, my question is this, what happens if we don't sign it?
That was my question.
Mm-hmm. That was my, I thought about it over the weekend.
I just mentioned it earlier. I just mentioned it earlier.
I thought about it over the weekend. What happens if it doesn't get signed? Do they continue to operate? Do they operate under the old agreement? Or does this new agreement come into effect without the board's signature? Because then they'll complain to the CCC and saying that Dartmouth didn't sign it. What happens?
So if the board elected not to sign it, the applicant could go back to the CCC and they could require us to enter into a host community agreement. We could face fines.
They could stick their fine right up their backside as far as I'm concerned. The CCC, to me, is not looking after the cities and towns of the Commonwealth. They're looking at, they're looking after
Cannabis.
The cannabis people. They're filled with cannabis control advocates. And the cities and towns of the Commonwealth were sold a bill of goods when this first came out and they changed the game. And now they're making everybody play by their rules and not by what is best for the community. And this, this carrot that they stuck in front of every Commonwealth city and town saying you're going to make a lot of money on this has basically gone down to a dried-up prune. We're expecting maybe hundreds, a couple of hundred thousand dollars. We'll be lucky if we see a quarter.
I suggest that we do not sign it.
I'm not going to sign it. I'll tell you this right now. I am not signing it.
Let's see where it goes. Don't sign it. I won't sign it either.
My recommendation is if the board is unsure about signing it or is leaning that direction, I would continue this and refer this to town councils so that the council can be briefed on potential ramifications.
Yes. I don't have a problem going toe-to-toe with the state. I'd live for it. Is that a motion from the board to refer this to town council?
It is a motion to the, from the board to refer this matter to town council.
Do I have a second?
Second and do not sign the bill.
Okay. On that motion, any questions? Being none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. It refers to town council. All right. Now the fun begins, people. We have before us the first drafting. Actually, let me just do this real quick. Chad, if you don't mind. I'm going to take the Mass DEP composting discussion. I was approached by Mr. Michaud regarding this. And he can explain it better. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to have Mr. Michaud work on a petition that we can present to our public so that they can sign, so that we can have a discussion with DEP on composting. Mr. Michaud. There wasn't enough time to develop it, by the way, or else it would be before the board. But at least this is the beginning. Mr. Michaud.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Select Board, again for the record, Christopher Michaud, Director of Public Health. So recently, we became aware of a set of regulations that Mass DEP has. It's an administrative set of regulations that guides the department as to how they promulgate regulations. Within those regulations, which are codified as 310 CMR 2.0, is a section that allows for any person to petition the department to rescind, to revise, or to amend, or make any change to regulations of the Mass DEP. Before the Title V changes, I know that prior administrations had talked about the odors that composting was creating in our residential neighborhoods. And then around 2017, we started to look at the water as we became more familiar with these composting sites as they were growing in size. And we were beginning to watch the environmental impacts with the vegetation dying back, waters discoloring, and ponds receiving the stormwater. We started to question it. We were able to test one site. One site voluntarily led us on. We tested that site. The results were off the charts. It blew septic tank effluent out of the water for total nitrogen, for phosphorus. And those are the primary pollutants of concerns in those watersheds down gradient. So it's a much bigger picture than just odors. It's also water. And it can be environmental. But we also know that in Westminster, they're suffering a similar DEP investigation like what's going on here in Bliss Corner because a compost site there contaminated a number of private groundwater wells. So it's also our private drinking water supplies. And lastly, we've seen a fire here. Middleborough saw some fires this year and others as well. So this is our chance. We've told DEP about these problems. They have not addressed it communicatively with us to say, hey, we realize that you were home to a lot of compost operations, to a significant volume descending upon Dartmouth. They have never sought out our opinion on how we believe compost could be managed, composting can be managed here in the Commonwealth to accomplish everything. I'm not some anti-composting person. It is a solid waste handling activity that needs proper regulation to protect the environment, public health, and safety. And it needs oversight. It needs government oversight. We know that in New York, from our research, that there's oversight. We know that in Maryland, that there's oversight and that there's more stringent regulations. And in my conversations with a colleague in New York, I learned that they were raising concerns much earlier about groundwater. And a study was done and found the pollution in the groundwater. So this is our chance, if the board so sees, to advance a petition, to put exactly in writing what we would petition the department to change and how we can protect the public health, the safety, and the environment in Massachusetts. From our experience with, at one point in time, eight registered facilities and two facilities that in their highest year were rivaling 40% of the volume of our Crapo Hill landfill. So, you know, they, with this 310 CMR 2 regulation, they, if the board submits or any person submits a petition, they have to hold a meeting on it. It will force them to address the concerns that the petitioner makes. Thank you.
Okay, so what's going to happen right now is Mr. Michaud is going to draft the petition with the particulars and then it'll be presented to this board in two weeks, hopefully, in two weeks, so that we can get it published on our website and available for signatures from our citizens. Mr. Talabon?
Mr. Michaud, thank you. Anybody else who's responsible. I just want to, I've always said with the DEP, my view with the DEP is that they sort of do the best they can with limited resources, high turnover, and an impossible job. And our job is to address the problems they bring up to us so we can do it at a pace and affordability that makes sense for us. I had a conversation with, I don't know if you're still there or not, John Fisher from DEP. And he's very involved. He even knows the four sites that we have in town. He knows that two of them are dramatic violations. He said to me that they do not have enforcement, they're revisiting their bylaw because they don't have any enforcement at this point in time. And I'm sure they're revisiting to the point where it may take a while for a visit. And I think that, I'm hoping that this language we can put together would be a proposal to how this thing should be regulated, how we do it, and who's responsible, because there is no regulation. And I think that, you know, what you just said is that these violations of these composting facilities in town far outweigh most of the septic system issues we have in town because it produces so much volume. So I think it's not only a great idea, but I think it's putting that matter into our hands in our town to do things that we can do at a pace that makes sense for us. It shows the state that they can't come in and issue these edicts they did two years back, whatever that was, because they just, they wanted to throw our hands to the fire. So I, I think it's, one of the things, the problem we have with the state is they're trying to put less product into landfills. So they're promoting these composting sites, but with no regulation and a theory that it's going to work, but you can't do it without regulation because it's a, it's a great place to break the rules. And I think it's a, I hope that the language you can put together would be, contain all those kinds of issues where we can really, it's a, that our citizens can understand what we're trying to do and we can send a clear message of what we're looking for.
As far as, as far as that goes, the petition basically would be to ask or demand, request, whatever, however you want to put it, to have a meeting with DEP on this issue. And then at that time, we'll be able to let them know, look, this is what we think should be done. You know, we want to work with you, but, you know, don't, don't license a facility and not ask us what we can do. You should be working with us. So basically, in developing these regulations for composting and guidelines, composting enforcement, should be working with the communities that have, that are being affected the most.
Let's face it, we're asking them to rewrite the way they oversee this issue.
Because there is no oversight.
Right. So that's what we're really asking for. So I don't know, could you just?
I mean, we're asking for oversight. We're asking for oversight.
There is none.
Right.
So is this a petition you're going to have people sign and then send it to them? Is that what you're thinking?
The petition can be simply signed by one person and it can be anyone. You know, I do believe that it'll attract a lot more attention and seriousness from the department if that petition comes with clout.
And the first, the first five signatures on that petition is going to be, should be this board. After that, it'll be the Board of Health. After that, it'll be the DPW. After that, it'll be our citizens.
Gives citizens a chance.
Why don't, why don't we just ask the local legislative delegation and get us a meeting with DEP?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Why go through the petition or can't we have the delegation ask for a meeting? Or they just don't respond?
So I believe it was in April of 2020, it was, it was April of 2023. I met with the Acting Commissioner of Mass DEP in this very building. I gave Mr. Moran a tremendous amount of information about harm to our environment across multiple sources, one of which was composting. So they're well aware of it. I was on a meeting last week where Mr. Fisher was conducting an advisory meeting. And he alluded to the problem of nutrients. And we know that there's regulate, draft regulations that have been sitting out there since the fall of 2022 that, for whatever reason, they're stalled. But I know what the highlights of those regulations are. They will not address our concerns.
Make no mistake, they know not only what's going on, they know our four sites and they know the two are really bad and gross violations. They're not moving. And what Chris is saying, we're going to move that mountain. We've got to change the way they do business.
They're operating in a vacuum. That's the whole thing. They're operating behind the walls of the DEP. And it's out, and it's about time that this comes out and the citizens get involved with this and say, hey, look, we know, this is what we want. This is what, we want clean water. We want clean everything. You know, we want to help you guys, but you got to let us in. They're not letting us in. And I don't mind going to our legislations, but I'll tell you this right now, our legislation could hit them with a hammer, but this petition's going to hit them with a sledgehammer. And that's what it's going to, and that's what we have to do. If we get our petition, then we say, hey, look, hey, Westport, here's what we have. Why don't you guys do it? For Haven, why don't you do it? New Bedford, I don't know if they'll do it. But at least get, you know, the other communities involved and just say, look, it's about time the DEP answers to the communities of this Commonwealth. They're not doing that now. Sorry.
And specifically to Mr. O'Neill, in April of 2022 and 2023 as well, we were writing letters to the DEP about our former issue and asking our local reps to hand carry them to the governor. And it didn't.
Well, it panned out. They excluded us.
You know, but on the other hand, they did release us from that last, they did. So something we did somewhere, somebody did something, of course, led by the charge by, by Mr. Michaud. So I think this is a great approach, but we've got to be careful of the language and we've got to make sure the message is clear and we've got to get a thousand signatures.
I would just like to say, we have maintained on this composting issue, a steady communication with the Senator's Office and the Representative's Office. They've both been tremendous allies in this. And I can speak firsthand with them. We've had a lot of communications on this. And even filing a bill, for example, on this. Senator Montigny called me the last time an environmental bond bill was filed. I want to say it was in 2018, 2019. Harriet Chandler from Northborough, who is battling this very issue, Senator, who's now retired, snuck into the bond bill language that was going to upend the composting regulations. And it passed. It sailed through the House, it sailed through the Senate without any debate. Governor Baker vetoed it. And because of the rules of the session, it was a pocket veto and they could not reconvene to override the veto. So, and Harriet Chandler had, up until her retirement, had constantly filed legislation, bills to try to enact legislation to change it, but it stalled. And last September, October, I did present on Beacon Hill a very brief testimony and a written testimony to the Joint Committee on the Environment about this very issue at the, because I was hinted at by one of our legislators that it was a good opportunity to raise this to them and to the committee. But I really believe that this petition process is going to be the best way to get inside.
Sure.
Let's give it a try.
Thank you.
So we hope to see something in a couple of weeks. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. All right. It's Chad time. All right, so we now have before us a draft of the Board Committee and Commission Handbook as developed by staff. And we're here to get a presentation and a review. So Chad, floor is yours, my man.
All right. Chad Deschamps, Select Board System Analyst. Let me get it set up here. I can't see.
System analyst.
Yeah, my title, system analyst. Who knows what it means, but I do stuff. All right, so over the past probably year or so, we've put a lot of work into updating our boards and committees database situation. The prior database we had for many years and it certainly, it certainly did what it was supposed to do, but we're looking for more of a, a public-facing solution at this point. So this is, this is what that is. All right, so this is basically the front page of that. It's called On Board. This currently displays all of our boards and committees. Here's all the headings. You can kind of click into them to see more information. Some of these, as we found going through the process, and Chris is going to kind of expand on that when it gets to his part, there's a lot of vacancies or expirations that we just weren't aware of before. And this really helps out in finding those things and trying to stay on top of them more. If you notice, like, these all kind of look very similar. Once you get down to one of the newer ones, so like Town Administrator Screening Committee, see, it displays a lot of information here. So we're trying to corral all these various boards and committees and update their charges or just get them where they don't exist currently and display all that information here. So like I said, this is the main site. On our actual town website, this is an example of what that looks like. So this is the Board of Health. This is a page that we've done already. In addition to what's already on the page, usually in most cases with these board and committee pages, there would be a listing of who's on the board, what their expirations are. And that's kind of up to either And that's kind of up to either the department or whoever is running the website to keep that stuff updated. We can just embed these iframes from our new boards and committees database to have that information there. And it gets updated as soon as we appoint somebody or, or whatever the case may be. So it kind of takes a lot of that upkeep out of, you know, everybody's hands. And you can kind of click through here. Right now, like as far as history, you know, we just started with this, so there isn't a real history, but it'll display like a graph of, you know, who's had what seed, how many terms, you know, all that kind of stuff. So I think it, it's kind of cool for, for the public to see that. As far as the information that you can see here, right now, I've turned off basically everything, all the personal information, like phone numbers, addresses, all that kind of stuff. I guess it's up to the board what you, you feel we should, we should display there. I would be inclined to say, you know, this is nice to, to visualize who the people are, but they should still maybe call into the, the relevant department or office to, to get more information, just to, you know, try to work on any issues that may arise. Let me go to, what else do I got? I just want to show you a little bit of the backend real quick. So this is kind of an administrator view of this. This is our dashboard. This red area right here, Melanie and I actually worked, put a lot of time into today. This is just a quick shot of like, you know, what do we have that's vacant? This, this, it says there's 77 vacancies. That's kind of true. A lot of that stuff, like the Charter Review Committee, which, you know, that's not really a thing right now. It is in the system because it's an established committee. So once that reconvenes, we'll, we'll update that, but that does contribute to the vacancy numbers right now. So with this, I can, I can kind of keep a better handle on like, we have openings and that kind of stuff. And then with that, so back to the public side, at the top of the screen and then also linked on our town website in our vacancies area, they can apply for boards right here. So this, this form kind of mimics what we have on the website right now. And we can, we can expand on this if need be, but I, I think it covers us pretty well right this second. They can pick, right now we have it set to five, but they can pick as many boards and committees as they would like to possibly join and they just fill out one application. Right now, the application, it's early, we haven't really started with this yet, but it goes to Melanie and I to kind of corral this stuff. But I can also set it to go to the relevant department or chair or whoever is in charge of that particular board. And then we can kind of keep a pool of applicants. We can, right now it's just set for boards that have vacancies, but we, if we want, we can, you know, try to get people's interest and as we get things, we can revisit the pool, anything like that. I think it's going to be really helpful for, for filling some of these vacancies. Let's see, did I forget anything?
Other than we can send notifications to members of the boards. Oh, no problem. We can send notifications when it comes time for renewals. I think one of our challenges now is we find we get a trickle in of people coming for renewals because they lost the form, they forgot about it, they didn't know what it was, they didn't know if it was the year of their reappointment. So I think having a system that will help us with that continuous communication reminders as well as the information that's in the guide that we'll talk about, I think will be very helpful for us.
Yeah, that, so that whole process is automated within this. So right now, we yearly, we run a report to see who's up and then we, we mail out some forms for people to return them. We're going to continue to do that, but in addition to that, this, we can kind of just set it to say, all right, 90 days before expiration, start sending emails to reminder, reminders for people to, if they would like to renew, or they can click, no, I don't want to renew and they'll stop getting the emails. So it'll really help us out in the office for that kind of stuff.
And just the last bit too, is Chad did mention under the boards, we can customize what are under each of those board categories. So I think as we go and we start having some conversations about committee charges, for example, having all that information in one place, because again, some boards, they get their charge from mass general law, some boards that are pointed, some it is a mass general law, but then we have a local bylaw which adjusts the membership. So having all that information in one place, it helps us, again, be able to track it, manage it better and, yeah.
All right. So that's, that's the presentation on what's going on. So now it's.
So that's the database.
Right.
Which we can all have access. I met with Chris Vitale and Terry Hamm. After our last meeting, we had said I, I was interested in, in looking at this. And I will say Chris and Melanie and Chad and Magnolia had spent a great deal of time working on the handbook. And so I think that's our next place to look. But in, to create the handbook, they had looked at this particular program that can track everything and it's just going to make.
It's a great idea.
Everybody's life that on the, the backend, everybody's life easier to manage this. We also talked about boards and committees. Right now, it's sort of a random time when people are expiring, but we will make that also at, everybody expires June, you know, 30th, new times come up July 1st, except for those boards who are elected and that would be after the April election. And so again, it would be the same thing. They would be notified that, you know, they'd have to take out papers to run. The others would be an appointment that they'd get, but it would really bring us out of the dark ages of papers and pencils and it also is going to give us an, an opportunity, I think, as a board to look at this onboarding site. And before we say, as, as Chad said, we have 77 possible openings, to look at the committees and find out if those are committees that are actually operating? Do we need them? Do we need to dissolve them? Do we need committees to be joined because their charge is similar or could be merged and become similar? So I think as a board, we have work to do to look at that. And I, I think if you had time over the weekend to look at the handbook that was created, it's incredibly thorough and that's really to a town hall group that worked on that.
Yeah. Well, going from absolutely, to be honest with you, nothing to give to people who go on boards to this document, I mean, it's, it's just, it's, it's a giant leap, that's for sure. And I think, and I think what this does is this gives everybody what the expectations are of you as a person on a board or a committee. And, and I think that's extremely important. But more, more so, what's also extremely important is getting the public to see who are on these committees. I, I think that's the most important thing because sometimes, once in a while, you get a question that say, I have a question for this person, who do I see? Well, it's check out the website. Oh, I did and there's nothing there. So now there will be.
Yeah, we also talked about to work with Magnolia is going to be a piece, if these are things that you're interested in, you know, the environment, the this, these are the committees you might look at. If you're interested in this, these are the committees. So that people can say, you know, I am interested, I'm retired and I used to do this for work or I have this passion hobby and, you know, what would be my thing, but I don't know. So maybe I join X committee because that's the only one I've heard of. But meanwhile, there are others that, but again, before we put that document together, we want to really look at all these.
Correct.
Committees and commissions and boards to see which ones we really need.
David, before you go, Chris?
Yeah, so I, I know we definitely don't have to go into each section of this, you know, but there are some, I suppose, policies that we've recommended and put in here based on past practice, based on looking at what other communities have done that appear to have worked. You know, towards the back of it, going off of what Heidi said, Appendix A is the list of boards, commissions and committees. And I will say that that is a section that's, needs some work. So I know some committees are relatively new, some have been around and some kind of just came together one day because a group of people were really interested in a particular subject matter. Some charges that we have or composition, for example, we don't have anything locally here in terms of a format that says, you know, you know, mass general laws and for the youth commission, I'll just, I'll pick on the youth commission for a second. In mass general law, it says that we can have anywhere between three and 20 members on that committee, you know, but if you were to go to our onboard database, I think our number is seven that we have it listed at. And I, I guess the why, I'm very interested in the why on some of these things. And if it's something where, again, not for tonight, but as we go, having a uniform charge for these committees that we can update from time to time, it's in a similar format and that can answer the question about how we got here for some of these committees, I think will be very helpful for the public and maybe new members in the future who will come back and say, well, how did we get from A to B? So that's something that I would say would be a phase two of this, hopefully down the road, but I think based on what we have in our system, this is a great starting point.
And to piggyback on what Chris was saying about it, also looks at, as he was saying, the numbers, looking through these, we have a number of, of boards that are three members. And what we're finding out with three member boards is that a quorum is two. They can never have a conversation and not be possibly violating open meeting laws. So we need to look at those boards and committees and commissions and see, do we increase their numbers to five or seven or, and then we may look at others and think they, do we institute the way boards and commissions and committees add an alternate? We have some that have alternates. We have others that might, should have an alternate, but we don't have language that says how that's selected. And I just think we, as Mr. McDonald said, we had nothing. And so what we're trying to, and as, as Chris Vitale put on the document, you know, this is to say, when this was instituted, this is our first time and it will be something that we look at again and update. And it's not something through the power of technology, we have to have, you know, hordes of printed documents. This becomes a live document and it can be updated on, without killing any trees.
Chad, about? A couple of questions. This onboard software is something that's used in other towns successfully?
Yes.
For this purpose?
Yep. When we were thinking about making the switch, our town clerk actually reached out to our clerks group to see what other people use and this was a common answer.
You like this one? Okay. A second question is, there's a, there's a lot of data that needs to be put in. First of all, the handbook is phenomenal. The amount of work that went into that by an army of people is pretty obvious, much appreciated. And I think, so my question on the, the, the data on the members in the commissions, there's a lot to be loaded in, I take it, on all that, that needs to be done.
It's pretty much in there already?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's not an issue. What Heidi, what concerns me or maybe a, a strategy is that we need to look at every, nearly all the, the charges and all the issues and all the departments and some are a lot more important, more, are more important than others. And it's according to the strategy, the time it's going to take and, and how we go at this, because this could be something full-time job, I mean, or do we pick off the most important? So in terms of a strategy and how we're going to do it and who's going to do it, you know, and, and a plan, I think would be helpful. And for me.
I'm sorry.
Sure you are.
Yeah, we are sorry. Mr. Vitale has something to say on that and I will tell you that 99.5% of this work is, is done. And yes, it does need an, an eye and I do think that we as select board members need to be that eye, but I'll let Mr. Vitale.
So I, I would say, you know, this is the 2024 handbook and I think the vision would be that a 2025 handbook would come out with any updates that the board discusses any given year. When it comes to looking at the individual committees, I would say we start with the ones that we don't have something on file for. We come up with a template that's been used over the last couple of years. We can bring that template to the board, say, hey, is this the information? Is this the format that we want all of our charges to be? And I would say as we go through, you know, it could be something where we knock off a few, a couple of months, a few a month and we'll make our way through them. You know, I would say if there's, if it's not just a simple update in formatting and it's more on the, you know, do we feel the need for this committee, you know, to exist in its current form or change the charge or combine it? I would say, you know, that we can separate into a different select board item.
I think that, you know, there's a mention in this agenda regarding, for instance, water quality and the harbor management plan. I know that needs a lot of work and I'd like to think that maybe we can pick those handful of the most important ones first and clean those up and get members going and, and in that case, get, get functioning committee or in ones that are the most, but I know some are going to require a charter change, like the DPW, they need to have five members, not three, but that's, that's a separate issue about a charter change. But I don't know how you feel about that, Heidi, in terms of setting the most important priorities as far as the boards and committees would be to address those first.
I think at this point, I mean, we can basically pick and choose where we want to go with it. You know, I mean, we're talking an existence in town of 360 years of not having absolutely nothing to having something. So it is going to take some time to do what we need to do, you know? And I think everybody recognizes that fact. So I think at the first, I guess the first and foremost thing would be to accept the, the handbook as presented.
Before that, what I would say is I know one of the items on this is select portal liaisons. So within the appendix, there is a section for liaisons. So perhaps any liaisons we discuss.
I've got that covered.
You got that covered?
Yes. Because what I'm going to do, when it came time to, to talk about that, I was going to, and I might as well just say now.
Okay.
Going to ask my members to individually email with what departments you want to be liaisons with.
I think we already have.
Wow.
We're involved already with you.
Well, but we have a new member that we haven't discussed any of that.
Officially. So send me what, send me what you would like.
I, I also think that we haven't really defined what's expected of a liaison. If you, you know, if you're one for the DPW versus the Soil Commission, I mean, it's a totally different. And I think we need to get a handle on that before we start, you know, volunteering and maybe, just maybe, we only do it for 10 committees the first time around, so we can really concentrate and be effective.
Well, I don't, I'd be honest with you. I'll be honest with you, I don't expect the five of us to go through and sit down with 70 some odd committees.
But I will say, if, if you look in the document itself, it already has, so if you look at your page 35, it will say the name of the appointed and elected board, you know, committee or commission. And then it would say who the appointing authority is. And if it's an electorate, by the electorate, it says that. The number of members, alternates, associates, other appointments, the term length of those seats and who is the staff liaison and select board liaison. And we may see that there are some, that if there is a staff liaison, we may feel that there does not need to be a select board liaison as well. For some and for others, there may be something that we feel does need to have, just in support of that staff liaison. Or it makes sense if there, if you have a particular interest of like committees, then you may want to be sort of the liaison between those like committees, just to see the string that goes through them. So, and this is not picking on any committee, but I'm just looking at the first two. So, and this is not picking on any committee, but I'm just looking at the first two. Agricultural Commission, Agricultural Preservation Trust Council. It may be worth looking at those two, seeing how they are similar or dissimilar, and saying, if I'm really into agriculture, maybe I want to be the select board liaison to both of those.
I look at it a different way.
Okay.
I mean, they're important, but there's some that are vitally important, and I think we need to make sure that those 10 or 20, whatever, that members, we do a really good job, and we participate, and we agree what that role should be.
Well, I think, I think the role, the role of the liaison is just basically to be there to make sure, you know, what is being said is absolute, is brought back to this board and to discuss, and basically letting that board work their way through their stuff without being an unduly influence on that, on their work. And that's basically, the way, the way a liaison worked on the finance committee is they went to the, they went to each, they listened to the presentations, they brought that information back to the finance committee. They did not influence how that board is going to do their budget.
Maybe, maybe there's a, Mr. Chairman, maybe there's a standardized expectation on the liaison that can be developed.
Yeah.
And then on top of that, also, like on the finance committee example that you gave, they also rotate. So sometimes the liaison may change to the school department, they may add a member, take a member off. So I think that's a working, that's a working process.
Yeah, so to Gary's point, in section 2.5 of the handbook, there's a category that says select board liaisons, and we kept it really brief in there. Each year, the select board shall designate a member of its body to serve as the primary point of contact for each board and committee in the town of Dartmouth. We can go in as much depth. I think the spirit of it is that if there is an issue or a question or concern with a particular board, they know who they can reach out to, and that member can take it back to the select board, the full body, for further discussion and deliberation, so...
I mean, that is one definition.
Yeah.
But another is, if you really want to know what's going on, and you really want, especially a large department, I think you need to be more proactive in terms of your relationship with that committee. And that's why I'm talking about the major committees, like the DPW.
So I look at page 20, that's on page 28. It says staff liaisons and select board liaisons. I think the other piece to remember is, when we have the opportunity at our meetings to give our select board update, that's a perfect time to just say the work of, this is where they are in their budget, this is, and to bring back that information of things that are going on. And I do think as we, it's going to be critically important as we enter this new budget season, we really need to communicate that mindset of not creating a budget for what you needed this year and you didn't have, but to operate your department or your area with what is needed for your department, your area to be successful for this next year or long-term. What do we really need?
In order to do that, you're going to have to be pretty proactive in terms of the budget season for that particular committee. And it's not being, okay, if you need me, give me a call. Although that could be one particular committee, but others, you've got to be active in the budget season.
Well, okay, I, what I...
I don't think there's that many boards and committees that have that impact of budget.
I don't, the thing, the thing that I want to, the thing that I want to avoid, and I don't believe it would happen here, is in the future, you have one person sitting on this board, becoming a liaison to a particular board, and trying to influence that board into doing things that they normally wouldn't do, or try to use their authority as a select board to that board. And I want these boards, I want to see these boards, whether they're elected or appointed by us, to work independently and with us, not how we tell them how to operate.
All the more reason why we need to...
I want to avoid that.
We need a defined role.
Right. And that's, and that's what we're looking at. So basically, it's a liaison, to me, is somebody that these boards can turn to for guidance on certain matters, or to bring back information to this board for future decision-making. I don't want, what I don't want to see is one person on this board telling Board X that, hey, you know, maybe I don't think that's where you should go with this, I think this is where you should, and that, I will totally avoid that.
But that's not the judge.
I know, but that's, it still doesn't, it still doesn't stop somebody from trying. And that's what I want to avoid.
All the more reason why it needs to be defined.
So let's, let's have, the staff has done a very damn good job on this handbook.
Agreed.
And I think they can come up with something on the liaison part that will make us agreeable to everybody.
More definitive, yeah.
And, you know, between now and when the next meeting is, because I know the board's going to discuss where they want each liaison to be or each member to be, we can write up something for that section, have a little board defined, and then the next time we come back, November 4th, the board can vote on the handbook at that point in time with everything till then.
Okay.
Great job.
Sean? Yes, Mr. O'Neil.
So, being the new guy, I actually reached out to Chris after I received one of the packets. I don't remember what the board position was, but there was a member that had come up for renewal, and I just, you know, you get it on Friday, you know, maybe a late Thursday, and you really don't have much time to react to appointments at that point. So I called and I asked if there was a list and where that, where it could be found, because I tried on the website and I couldn't find it. Well, Chris sent me the link to this page, and it was great. I've actually, I know it was kind of in the works, but I, a couple of people had requested it, so I sent the link out. And it's really important, number one, to have all the members listed, but also the dates of their reappointment and the times of their reappointment, so, the years, anyway. So, especially for the select board. So that comes in real handy if you're new on this particular board. And then on the liaison, I'll just say that, you know, if you look at it from, like Sean, I think you had mentioned, assigning the liaison so the board can actually bring that person in, they have the one person on the select board that they can reach out to that will be somewhat familiar with what they're going through. If there are any major issues, they can always request that they, that they attend the meetings. So, you know, I think it works more importantly the other way, where a board can reach out to their person on the select board, just to be the ears, to bring some of the concepts back to the select board, to get a feel for the boards that are sitting in town. That's probably the most important thing that could come out of it, in my opinion. So I defer to you on how we do it, but I think it's important to actually have it done.
I think the most important issue is, this is a gigantic step forward for our town. Great work done by you.
Huge step forward. It beats Neil Armstrong.
Neil Armstrong?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Is he around?
Yeah, he did a board and committee thing up on the moon, so...
I thought so, yeah.
I think that if you'd like, we can, Terry and I could meet with Chris one more time, or look at anything, if there's anything else in the handbook. And as Mr. O'Neil said, I know you just received it, but if, if we're not going to, we'll talk about it on November 4th, we have a couple of weeks to look at it and digest it. And having been, you know, on this board for a few years, and having done the work on the charter, looking at this, I have to commend Mr. Vitale and the folks that he dragged or voluntold to work with him on this. An outstanding job. It's easy to read, and I think some of the other things that he's also added into this is a template for posting meetings, a template for meeting minutes. Exactly what to do if you should receive, if you're on a board and you receive an open meeting law complaint. It says exactly what to do in there. It really trying to, when myself and Terry Ham sat down with Chris, we really went back and forth with our experience, having been on other boards. What are some things that came up? What do we wish we had known? Also, it gave us a format to talk about actually conducting an in-person training that could be filmed and then sent out to boards and committees, is something for them to watch, to make them aware, having them, you know, what do you do on that first meeting, appointing a chair, a vice chair, a secretary, a treasurer, if you needed to. But I just think it just clears up for every board and committee, what is our charge? And I think the other thing that's helpful is, I think that sometimes there are boards and committees that go overstep or go, don't stay in their lane. They start thinking that they should also have input onto things that are not in their charge. So...
Mr. Brooks, I think I'm preaching to the choir here, if I may, Ms. McDonald. I would ask that the top priority be, we had, we talked about water and water quality tonight, and composting, DPW and all that, all night long practically. The issue of our waterways, our water quality, and our harbor management plan, where we're going with that, and a water quality committee, I think is the absolute number one on the list. And if we could work on that, formulate a committee, make some decisions, so we can put this in and make a recommendation to the select board, I'd be happy to assist in that case. But I think, my personal view is, number one on the list.
The charge, tonight, we have the charge of the Waterways Advisory Committee.
Well, we've been asked, I've been asked, and it's going to say so, Heidi, that we're not ready for that decision at the discussion with Mrs. Brooks.
I've asked for it to come up, but I think now, in looking at this document and looking at what we've talked about with other committees that are already in existence, is we need to look at all of them and see if there's a way to merge them. And I think there has to be a discussion, that it may come down to actually having a meeting, joint meetings with those groups, and saying, we feel that the charge needs to be rewritten, we feel the boards need to be either dissolved and recreated, or merged and reformulated. But I think we're, because we have this document, and the information is all here, we're in a better place to make those decisions.
Well, it took us 300, like I said, it took us 360 years to get to this point. It's going to take us a little bit longer to get, to get to where we want to go. So, all right, so that takes care of A of this. Are we doing anything with the Cornell Advisory Committee and the Harbor Management Implement Committee?
No. So with those, Gloria Bancroft, the Chair of Cornell Pond Advisory, did submit a letter recommendation seeking to dissolve the committee. They feel that they can continue to do their work as volunteers to the town. Now, they're an advisory committee, so they don't really make any decision on behalf of the town. If they're just working with staff, you know, advancing the goals of the town as volunteers and assisting their time, it doesn't need to be in the form of a public, public body. It's only if they are given authority to make decisions on behalf of the town, or if they're overseeing funds on behalf of the town. But if they're just assisting staff, they don't need the public meeting designation.
I know what you mean, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't need to be a formal committee.
Right. They don't need to be a formal committee and do the minutes and all that kind of stuff.
It can still help.
That's correct.
It can still help, insist, so...
Like Tom can do that.
Let me ask you a question. Do we, instead of having, well, do we keep it as a saying in the Cornell Pond Advisory Committee, or do we put it as the Cornell Pond Ad-Hoc Committee?
Really want to make a difference? I think the difference here is, rather than tracking it as a committee, there wouldn't necessarily be appointments. It would be, their membership would just be based on who is interested within the community, and we could get them in touch with those residents.
Okay, do we need to do a formal vote to dissolve the committee?
Before we do that, Sean, may I just point out, in D, which is the Dartmouth Boards and Commissions Guide Review and Adoption, we have to talk about public meeting format discussion, because it actually, there's differences, and we may want to consider, do certain boards and committees have to follow Robert's rules, or are there, there are other public body ways to function that are not as formal as that?
Well, and I would say, any committee that's appointed by this board has to follow Robert's rules and Mass General Law.
Unless we call it an ad hoc committee?
Right.
Which, I would advise that we do that for the Cornell Pond. I think that's what Gloria is asking for, a different designation.
So a couple notes on that. Robert's rules, we can certainly add that language into the handbook. With regards to the meeting format, there is a section there, 3.4, that just talks about the meeting format. And I don't necessarily know the composition, if that's what you were trying to say, or just the designation of the board. But in terms of meeting in person versus remotely versus hybrid, and it does have, I think encapsulates what the boards talked about at prior meetings, about recommending in person, but hybrid virtual should be conducted on a limited as-needed basis. And then it just goes on to say, to coordinate with DCTV, and offers guidance about voting and whatnot, so...
I think what Gloria is asking for is to be relieved of all those attachments, and simply be a group that meets or comes to Town Hall to talk with staff regarding Cornell Pond.
That's right.
And whatever we need to do, I think we should take care of it, because she's, all the work she's done, she's making this request, it, she doesn't, she understands the rules.
We'll wield them, yeah.
For sure.
So basically, so in order for them to become an ad hoc committee, we would have to dissolve the committee as currently...
As advisory.
As currently noted, as currently noted, however it's noted. So if we just say, the motion would be to dissolve the Cornell Pond Advisory Committee as, as currently noted, and for the record, that would, and just, that'd be the one motion. And then the following motion is to establish an ad hoc committee for the Cornell Pond.
Motion made to dissolve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Motion made by Ms. O'Neil, seconded by Mr. Tattletale, on the motion to dissolve the Cornell Pond Advisory Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Is there a motion?
I'm going to say, I'm, because I still have a question. If we do ad hoc committees, are we going to include ad hoc committees in here?
A different name for it, a different designation.
Well, I just think if we dissolve it, and there is no mention, they're just neighbors getting together, if they...
Yeah, that's all, it's basically all of this.
We, we say it, because then I could say, well, I'm going to have an ad hoc, you know, fire pit group that, you know...
We don't need that.
Need that.
No.
Yeah.
They'll present themselves in a proper way when they need to.
Yeah, because if there's something...
We don't have to create ad hoc committees, please don't.
So how about the Harbor Management Plan Implementation Committee?
My view is not ready for that.
Okay. All right, we'll take care of that.
Review that, Heidi?
I don't, I'm not familiar with the Harbor Management Plan Implementation Commission.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Committee.
No, we don't, we'll just table it.
No motion, I mean.
No motion. All right, so the review of the charges, the current boards and commissions, that's still, oh, okay, so now this is the waterway, water quality control.
Same thing.
Water Quality Advisory Committee, sorry.
So I think on that one, I'd like to hold on that, because I do think we need to look at waterways, water quality, harbor management plan, and, and look to where we have overlaps.
Okay.
Joint meeting would be good.
You in agreement, Mr. Tattletale? Are you in agreement with Ms. Brooks?
Very much, I think. I'd like to look towards a joint meeting.
Okay. All right, and how about Dartmouth Advocates for Addiction Recovery and Treatment?
I'd like to hold on that, because we're going to have a meeting, and we have some things under, in the works that may change some of that. So I'd like to hold on that as well.
All right, so now we have the Town of Dartmouth Boards and Commissions Guide Review and Adoption, which we're not going to do, because we're going to take a look at this, the public meeting format discussion, we will be reviewing again. And as far as the select board liaisons, I'll, I can say this, if you want to wish to be a liaison in the committee, just kindly email me alone, please.
Yeah.
All right. That takes care of that. So, before we move on, thank you, everybody who was involved in this, Chad, Gary, Chris, Felony, Magnolia, and anybody else who's going to have their hands done on this.
This is Brooks and Terry Ham, yeah.
These are guys that did a fantastic job, and I appreciate that, that's for sure. It's going to make these future, future board members' lives a lot easier. Kudos, Chad. And you still do a good smash burger, but you need onions, Chad.
Okay.
All right, let's see, moving on, interim town administrator update, Mr. Gary. All right, let's see, moving on, interim town administrator update, Mr. Gary.
Mr. Chairman, so quickly, the Board of Selectmen's Office just hired a administrative clerk. As you know, Kenzie Philomam started today. She's going to complement the afternoons as Stephanie works in the mornings, so we're happy to have her on board. The town's fuel assistance program starts on Wednesday, October twenty-third. It's a five hundred dollars, it's eligible, for eligible residents. Applications can be submitted online to the town's website or by visiting the Select Board's office. And finally, I attended, as you know, the school committee meeting last week, where they discussed the department's strategic plan. I was really impressed on the amount of work and commitment that was involved in compiling all that information, with many people involved in that, in that study. It was a high-level overview, and Jim Kylie will be sending me the information on the details behind the plan. So once I receive that, I will forward that to the board for their review.
Mr. Vitale, you have anything?
No updates from me. Thank you.
All right. All business, plus corner.
No new.
No kachoke.
No new business.
Broadband.
No new business.
Title V.
No new business.
All right, minutes, we have the minutes of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, board's pleasure.
With them, and I did not see any issues with them, so I would like to recommend that we approve the minutes of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, we have an educator saying it's okay and everything's spelled right.
Hmm.
Is there a second, Mr. Talabon? All right, on the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Just the reason why I said that, it just, when Lenny Gonzalez was a select person, he was always finding something wrong with the minutes, so, and, and you know Lenny wasn't an educator, so.
Yeah.
All right, under information, just have, we have the yard waste schedule that should be up on the DPW website, should also be on the town website. We were also awarded an award for the Ellsworth Public Station grant. Lots of money?
Two million, one hundred thousand dollars.
Two point one million, ah, way to go. All right, and we also received today officially in the email, some notice of, some awards for school department stuff through our town email. Oh, you're going to make me get the town email. All right, wait a minute.
Second.
All right, where is it? Town mail.
Oh, those, yeah, those are the.
Yes.
The Mass, the energy grants.
Right, the energy grants.
Which the, I think we briefed the board on a couple, few meetings ago, but now we actually received the money.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't official, it wasn't official.
Actually received the money, yeah.
But now we got the money, so we're good to go.
Right, yep.
All right. And we also have, oh, that's, we have a public meeting notice on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, Mass DEP, the twenty, twenty twenty-two law petition, energy law petition. Two years, oh, this is, I guess, how DEP works. They hold a hearing two years after the thing has been done. All right, so we will be meeting tomorrow with the planning board to interview two individuals for the town planner. And before we leave, I just want to remind everybody that on Friday, November first, the Representative Markey and the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly will be holding a veterans' election at Rachel's Lakeside, so if you are a veteran, please call five zero eight nine 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 four seven one seven for reservations, or you can call Maria Connor at five oh eight six three six sixty-four fifty-three. All right, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
They are.